Okay, I'll call the special meeting Wednesday, February 18th, 2015, the order. Quick call roll.
Alderman, Putoff, Ferrari, Waldorf, Fococius, Perez, Ragti, Mueller, Sapienza, Mayor Harrow.
Here, pleasure leadings. Did anybody fill out a public comment card? Okay, reports, city attorney, ordinances, resolutions?
Yes, your honor, we have two proposed ordinances this evening. The first ordinance will authorize the execution of a sale agreement with Peru Industrial Railroad, LLC, that's in Colorado, limited liability company. And then the second ordinance would stop the charges that we charge rail cars after the closing on this transaction, which is scheduled for tomorrow at 2:00 at Buckner &amp; O'Toole Title Company. This will be finalization or culmination, if you will, of matter that's been going on for approximately two years. In fact, it was on October 7th, 2013, that the city council unanimously passed an ordinance to engage outside council at that time to address pending issues and disputes concerning Peru Rail. There were jurisdictional issues with respect to the Federal Railway Commission and inspectors down here. There are also issues with Illinois Railway concerning the maintenance of Peru Rail. And then subsequent to that time, there were matters been addressed numerous times in closed session because it concerned the acquisition or sale of real estate. And there were presentations and negotiations, as you all know, with Adam Hess and Bill Peach of Illinois Railway. Agreement was struck concerning a letter of intent. That letter of intent was also adopted unanimously by the city council, I believe, on October 20th, 2014. Then under that letter of intent, Illinois Railway proceeded at its expense to do a Phase One environmental study, which they did. And there were, the city also proceeded to have the property appraised. It was never reduced to writing, but as you recall, George Werner, nationally recognized railroad appraiser, was in town for the week and studied the railroad, gave us his opinion. The railroads are either sold, one, as a going concern, or, two, they are liquidated. Liquidation value would be the value of the scrap metal, okay? And then the sale of the right-of-way normally just to contiguous or adjacent landowners. Depending upon the sale value of scrap, the value of the metal of 110-pound rail, you'd net probably anywhere from $175,000 to $230,000. George, at that time, given the thin spot market of scrap, was more around the $220,000. Recent communications from Illinois Railway, of course, suggest $175,000, which was all sent to you. Why is the city selling Peru Rail? First off, and I think it's important, the city has no control over rates or what industries along Peru Rail pay. It's all controlled by the Burlington Northern Santa Fe. Peru Rail just connects to the Illinois Railway. The Illinois Railway just connects to the Burlington Northern Santa Fe, or BNSF, at Zering. So the contract, the industry contract, is between BNSF and the respective industries. And then Illinois Railway, as it presently constituted, is what's called a handling carrier. And they get paid a couple ways. One, if they have a demurrage fee if they're handling rail cars and they're storing them, store, demurrage, on a barge, you would call it mooring fees. And also the interconnect, you know, for operations on the industrial site. But the fee for taking the car from here to Zering to connect with the Burlington Northern is a negotiation between that carrier, Illinois Railway, and Burlington Northern. I think if you ask the handling carriers, they won't say it's a negotiation, it's a dictate. They just tell you what you're going to get, and that's what it is. Now, this will, it appears that they're looking to create a separate railway of the 3.05-mile-long Peru Rail. And Mr. McFarland thinks that it would still be considered a handling carrier, because it, but here you'd be handling carrier from here, I guess, to the Illinois Railway and to the Burlington Northern. But how that, and how anything is going to affect rates is hard to determine. One thing that's for certain is that there'll no longer be the $50 per car fee that Peru presently imposes. In fact, the initial ordinance passed by the city had a $100 per car rate, and then that was amended because the volume of cars by James Hardy was more than what was originally anticipated, and the city was just trying to cover its cost of maintenance of that railway, which at that time was probably average $30,000 or so a year. The railway now needs extensive work, needs to be quote hardened for a couple reasons, so it could then handle fully loaded rail cars. All the cars cannot be fully loaded now. Illinois Railway has strengthened all of its bridges from here to Zering to be able to handle those fully loaded rail cars, and more importantly, to be able to handle full unit trains. A unit train is about 100 cars, more or less. And Burlington, BNSF, has publicly announced, and in fact, you can look in our rail site magazine, Progressive Railway, or Progressive Railroads, just go to their website and put on the archive for February 13. And I think you'll see there that Burlington Northern in the state of Illinois is spending $331 million in the state for capital projects to enhance its system within the state. It is my understanding that part of those funds, approximately $5 million, that isn't Burlington Northern's estimate, but that's an estimate from a rail person, would go into Zering to be able to have three full lines that would be connected on both sides. The significance of that is, is then a full unit train could pull into the Zering station, drop off all 100 cars, pick up 100 empty cars, and bring them back. And so the efficiency of the Zering operation will end up being greatly enhanced. So that's a positive. And getting back to the reasons of the city's sale of the railway is that the city has not been able to obtain liability insurance for Peru Rail. So we've essentially been uninsured now for quite some time. City Clerk's office has worked on that through the Illinois Municipal League Risk Management Association, but they've had difficulty getting insurance, and we have no insurance. So we're exposed in the event of a derailment or liability with respect to the railroad. Illinois Railway, since what Peru Rail is now is what's called an industrial track, Illinois Railway has no duty or obligation to come upon Peru Rail to service any of these industries. The law is, is that, you know, if they just said no, you know, nothing we can do about it. In fact, that's where, as you recall, some of the disputes were a couple years ago. They wanted great upgrades to the rail line at a very substantial cost, and city did some very minimal upgrades then, but, you know, we've gone on, and that's where we are now. What they have filed, they have filed with the Surface Transportation Board to bring Peru Rail into the rail system. And I think that's important because then the Surface Transportation Board has jurisdiction over that railroad, which will now be an independent railroad, Peru Industrial Railroad, but they have jurisdiction with respect to rates, service, disputes. And more importantly, the railroad has to service those industries, and they cannot abandon the line without an order from the Surface Transportation Board. So handed out three handouts and then a brief overview of what the Surface Transportation Board is, which is really just a successor to the Interstate Commerce Commission, but they handle that. They had filed, Illinois Railway, on behalf of this entity, had filed, when Jeff called, I think he saw it as land acquisitions or whatever, and all they did is change the corporate name, so it's the same entity that filed before the Surface Transportation Board, but they filed a name change to then call that entity Peru Industrial Railroad, which is great because I think that helps with the marketing. It appears to me, we don't get it, but it appears that Illinois Railway is probably has and will spend maybe up to $10 million in the purchase of Peru Rail. There's $1,250,000. The hardening of Peru Rail, the purchase of the land which was closed, as you might have read in the paper a couple weeks ago, and the hardening and strengthening of the bridges to take trains from here to Zering, and then, of course, they'll be doing their own transload Another question was, well, why the rush tonight? And this has been going on, I think, might have been used in a way, and that was part of the original agreement, which I sent all of you, is that, you know, it was all contingent, even the letter of intent was contingent upon, you know, entering into the annexation agreement and all the rest. Well, the nice thing about this is that one will no longer be contingent upon the other. So why are they even doing it now? I don't know, but my suspicion is, is that it is a starker exchange trust money under Internal Revenue Code, Section 1031. And what that is, when you sell commercial or an industrial property, okay, so you sell it, or a farm, they do it in farms all the time, if you sell Farm A, you put the money into this exchange trust, and you have 45 days to identify three other parcels that you may use that money to purchase with. And then if you do conclude that purchase within 180 days, you don't have to pay the taxes on the gain you got from the first sale. So it's a tax-avoiding method to avoid paying the taxes when you go from one piece of real property to another piece that's used for commercial or industrial purposes. And I think, I'm just guessing, they're running up on that deadline on the 180 days. The purchase of the Pence Farm was concluded because in that one, they were running up to the end of their option to purchase. So that's my understanding of the situation. The first ordinance then is that the city's agreed to sell, and Peru Industrial Railroad has agreed to purchase Peru Rail for $1,250,000. Rail is an expense of the city to maintain and was acquired by the city for the express purpose of promoting commercial, industrial, and economic growth of the city. The Peru Industrial Railroad proposes to upgrade Peru Rail, including the industrial development of certain properties along Peru Rail for industrial purposes. Whereas the sale of Peru Rail to Peru Industrial Railroad will provide needed revenues to the city, will increase the economic development of the city, will promote the employment of residents of the city, will increase the real estate tax base of the city, and will promote industrial development and redevelopment within the city, all of which objectives pertain to the government affairs of the city. Peru Rail is approximately 100 feet by 3.05 mile longs in a zone M2 manufacturing district. The sale with the reservation of easements is set forth in a proposed quit claim to use the manner pertaining to government affairs of the city's proper public purpose and promotes a general welfare and economic growth of the city. They'll therefore be either deemed city council finds its facts, recovers here and before set forth. I continue, the mayor and deputy city clerk, we added, we thought from the ordinance sent out to you last week, we added the word deputy, because Dave is gone, so Steph is going to step up and sign the deed. We're authorized and empowered to execute the agreement and the quit claim deed and closing documents to effect the conveyance of the Peru Rail, Peru Industrial Railroad for the purchase price pursuant to the terms of the agreement. So the city will basically, net title charges through Buckner &amp; O'Toole and escrow closing fees is just short of $5,000. So the check that you'll pick up tomorrow will be about $1,245,000, a little more than that, but... So this is the ordinance that authorizes that sale.
I have a few questions, Corporate Counsel. As you know, I've sent over a bunch of questions over the last couple days.
This morning, I got, and it's been going on for two years. Frankly, I wish, you know, I could address matters before the last minute.
Right. We just got the full agreement last week, so by the time I reviewed everything, and, you know, like I wrote, I had, there was a close death in the family last week too, so... But anyway, I just, I feel that we should have went to James Hardy. They are our largest industrial user, and of course, our electric rates also. I mean, if it wasn't for James Hardy, the city approved, we're looking at a whole different outlook. And I don't believe that we've done our due diligence in getting to the table with James Hardy to discuss this. I mean, they use the rail, that's a big part of their transportation. As a matter of fact, if their rates tend to go up and increase, and they have to go to move to trucking, we're going to see James Hardy laying off, we're going to see, you know, there are some major concerns that I think that we should have went to the table with James Hardy, brought them in to get their input and their thoughts. As a matter of fact, why not, why didn't we perhaps ask James Hardy if they were interested in buying the rail? That's something that, you know, we should have considered doing, and being fair, because they're the ones that have been, you know, using it through the years, for the most part. So James Hardy has been up in the air, they haven't had anybody go to them and explain the detail, in detail, of what's going on, and I just, you know, discovered that today. So I think that, you know, I mean, for who James Hardy is, for our, as a business partner of the city of Peru, we should be discussing things and see how this is going to impact their business, because I think it's going to have a pretty good impact on their business. And, you know, it is public property that we are selling to Illinois Rail, and, you know, I mean, why didn't we, or why don't we give James Hardy that opportunity? Because I think they would at least try to take it, at least, you know, have that discussion.
How does that change James Hardy's rates? Their agreement is with Burlington Northern Santa Fe. Want to see their industrial track agreement? Because we got it.
They're also paying Illinois Rail too, correct?
No, they pay BNSF. What they would pay, well, of course, they'd pay demurrage fees, they pay the city of Peru $20 a day, demurrage fees or storage itself.
The only reason you pay demurrage fees is if you don't unload the cars in a timely manner. So if you unload the cars in a timely manner, then you should not be paying demurrage at all.
Right, and that's...
They can only handle five cars a day. They do not have sufficient space onsite to do an efficient operation. That's what it is.
...control over their demurrage fees by how fast they unload their cars.
Well, my concern is the city approved giving up that, any kind of control over that property and that rail could open up all kinds of issues.
Well, what issues? Let's talk, you know, this has been going on for two years, that's why I'm a little upset about it, to send me an email this morning raising stuff that you've been at numerous closed sessions where this has been spoke about, but yet this morning, you have to start raising what you think are issues, when we've had two professional people, three professional people, one a professional appraiser, and we've had two people that specialize in railroad sales and acquisitions. And what's upsetting about it is that the city is out there exposed because of no insurance.
Corporate Counsel, didn't we just get that agreement Thursday or Friday of last week?
We've been working on this for a long time. Yes, yes, you tell me about the agreement. I went through seven or eight revisions before you've even seen it, and you saw it last week.
Thursday or Friday, I went through it, reviewed it, and I have quite, I had questions, that's why I emailed.
Okay, and I gave you three letters today to answer those questions.
And I'm just bringing it up. So what about, as far as the insurance goes, Mendota owns their own rail. How do they get insurance? How are they insured?
I have no idea. City of Mendota owns their own rail? I have no idea. And you'll have to address this, maybe Stephanie knows, and I didn't work on that issue, the city clerk, Dave, did.
We have been dealing with it for two years, and I'm, that's why I'm quite surprised to find out today that we haven't had any discussions with James Hardy to see how this would impact their business, and it would have an impact.
How do you control that impact? How do you control that impact? That's what I'd like to know, because we have no privilege contract with Burlington Northern, we have absolutely no control over Burlington Northern, nor do we have any control over Illinois Railway.
So, so while Peru Rail, excuse me, Illinois Railway could come to the city and say, "We're no longer moving cars along your track," is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, they're going to have to give us money.
Would that not impact James Hardy's business negatively?
Well, that's where we would have to...
I would think the agreement we're passing tonight prevents that from, that potential issue from happening.
And that was discussed, I mean, that was discussed before this council. Are we going to get into the Peru Railroad business, which will mean, you know, one, upgrading that track, and then, two, buying a locomotive to haul those cars from the industries?
What was the number, the money number on upgrading the track?
Well, no, Tony, that would be the, D8 million would be, well, it wouldn't be that much. But to put in the why, see, the why is what's the expensive issue to be able to handle those cars. And that was, you know, that would probably be a couple million dollars itself, but hardening and the ties, you know, it's going to be six digits if it's a nickel, but, you know, but all this has been discussed time and time again for two years. That's why it just gets upsetting to, you know, try to bring up matters at the last minute for whatever reason, I don't know.
Well, we still haven't been to James Hardy to discuss...
Okay, go talk to James Hardy. What are they going to tell you? That we can't control their rates because we can't control Burlington Northern. We're going to pay what Burlington Northern tells them they're going to pay. And if Peru Railroad comes, they're going to have to do just what they tell them. That's right. And you have to look at different spheres of advantages. I just don't see where you have any control over that, and both our railroad experts told us the same thing. So if you have control over, sure, but the kind of investment that they're putting in is not only going to ensure the survival, more so than now, of Peru Rail, but the rest of all of Illinois Railway that runs all along the river.
I think the thing we don't, we don't get about it, and the point that is missed, besides the liability issues and the money revenue we're making on the sale, Mayor Baker, to his credit, in the 1990s, saw this as an economic tool to bring in companies or help companies transport. I think it worked, and it has worked, and I think we bought it in 1990s at about 300 and some, about 370,000, something of that nature, 325. And it has worked, but it needs so much more to be competitive. With the sale to now, where Peru's selling a railroad, it's going to be an upgrade, the system's going to be upgraded, there's going to be renewed marketing efforts because of the rail system having this amount of money invested into it. So you're going to see more economic activity or the potential for that just by having the upgrade of the rail there, which is certainly maybe the main benefit or the biggest positive about it is, hey, this is a whole nother marketing effort that the rail system's going to get for the city of Peru. And obviously, they compete against transportation, like you said, Rodney, against trucking transportation, so their rates are going to compete against that all the time. They're not going to raise their rates where they're going to blow the companies out of the water that they have to, because those companies always have choices with it. So at this point, you're going to see, I think you're going to see renewed efforts that that whole area north Peru, you may get additional companies locating there because of it.
Right, and the one other thing that people aren't, are forgetting, is I think you just mentioned it, is the rail being hardened means that currently, people are only putting 75 ton of material in the rail cars on the rail.
And they can only go, they have to go under 10 miles per hour.
And they can have to go under 10 miles an hour. So when you can put the proper amount of material in a rail car, which is 100 ton, then obviously, on a per ton basis, you're going to be able to ship, you'll be able to ship more material per car, so your cost per ton of material that you ship should decrease. And also with the capacity improvements, like you said, they should be able to move more cars along the track, which is only going to benefit the fact that there can then be more business on the track, because you can put more cars on the track and more material in every car.
And their advantage is, the more people use it, the more money they make. So they're going to want to market it, they're going to want to give a price that people are using it, and, you know, that's, I think, a positive for the city.
So we know that Illinois Rail wants, you know, they purchased this for, because of Northern White Sands. So, and in five, 10, 15 years, when that crashes, I mean, they're most likely either going to put a request in to abandon it, or they will try to sell it back to the city, or file bankruptcy. I mean, they're an LLC, they don't need permission to file bankruptcy, they can just do it if business is done with and they're complete. They can do that pretty much at any time, so then we're going to be, you know, having to bail out that system. But my point is, I...
Wait, 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 let's stop there. Couldn't Illinois Railway do the same thing today? Couldn't Illinois Railway do the same thing today?
Sure.
So, I mean, what's the difference?
Or it could be... Because we own the rail right now, today.
Well, who's, uh, wh- where's it gonna go? A rail to nowhere? What if they abandoned the Illinois Railway track to Zering?
There's gotta be, so there's only one rail company?
That's correct.
There's only one throughout...
That's, that's correct. That's the only one that, that we connect to, so that's who we have to deal with.
Who would buy it?
Illinois Railway? I don't know. I don't know if they would or not. I mean, I'm, I mean, the big boys shut off all these short lines, 'cause they didn't find them profitable. I mean, that's the bottom line of it. And the bottom line is, is that Chicago Rail Link, that was owned by Caris Corporation in nineteen eighty-eight, was gonna pull up the, uh, rail on the track that we're talking about now and sell it as scrap. And that's when the city council got involved and purchased that rail line in July, I believe, of nineteen eighty-eight. Otherwise, it would be farmland today, and you wouldn't have any of those industries up there that need the rail.
As it stands today, we're a living dinosaur. If we keep things going as it is, we're a dinosaur that's just waiting for extinction. But with the sale of the line, they're gonna promote it, and you're gonna see additional economic activity and certainly the profit that the city of Peru is gonna gain without the issues of liability.
The general manager of, um, James Hardy mentioned today that they would have liked to have the discussions to purchase that rail. So, I mean, there was maybe another opportunity...
Okay, now let's stop there. Now, hasn't this been published in the newspaper numerous times? And been discussed numerous times?
I'm just passing along, though, I'm doing because...
And the only person that we ever heard of one time was the operator of the sand facility of, uh, maybe getting a locom, uh, uh, an engine.
You said, the general manager of James Hardy, did they call you?
Actually, I was speaking with, um, Brandy, who works in the office, and then all of a sudden, I know that I'm going in before the, uh, well, it was this afternoon at three o'clock, um...
So you set up a meeting to go into James Hardy about...
I did set up a meeting.
It sounds like that.
No, I didn't know.
But why, why today when it's going on for two years? That's what the problem is. Oh, okay.
And then all of a sudden, I find out that James Hardy had no clue of what was going on, that this was even on the agenda tonight to be sold, or any discussions with them to find out the future of James Hardy and their rail system. They have not had any talks with Illinois Rail or the city of Peru on anything.
I'm finding this very hard to believe, Solomon Perez. I've been in talks, and everyone in this room knows it, I've been in talks with James Hardy over electric, and rail was discussed.
When was the last time?
Rail was discussed.
When was the last time you spoke with Richard?
It was, we've probably been, I've been in with them probably, what, three times in, in the last three months? Not three times in the last two years. We've talked about rail.
Okay, according to, uh, Richard, there has been no discussion on Peru Rail.
I'll have, I'll have a conversation with Richard tomorrow.
That's fine.
I, I don't understand why, why James Hardy would have contacted you, and then all of a sudden, you changed your story and said you contacted someone in there, and then all of a sudden, Richard, the plant manager...
And then all of a sudden, she comes back to me and says, "We're not aware of what's going on."
Mayor, haven't we been attending the rail summits and, and also...
James Hardy was at the rail summit, Patrick Glendler, CFO, was at the rail summit, they're, they're aware of this, everything's...
Passing it on is all I'm doing. They, they had no, they haven't, they've had no discussion with the city of Peru or Peru Rail regarding the future as of tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, okay, let's assume for sake of argument that it's true.
It is true.
Let's assume, well, we have a differing opinion there, but let's assume, what difference is it gonna make? Are you gonna leave the city rail the way it is, uninsured? What difference could it possibly make in the actions that the city's gonna take? What difference does it take?
And put it under their insurance policy, I don't know.
But then they have nowhere to go with their cars.
Where are they gonna go? They have to deal with Burlington Northern, just like they have to deal with them now.
But you need to understand, see, you didn't have all the information when you supposedly talked to, talked to the plant manager, James Hardy. They have nowhere to go, they can go to the end of the three point oh five miles, then they have to stop, 'cause there's nowhere to go.
Why wouldn't they still work with Illinois Rail, like they're doing now?
They're working with Burlington Northern.
What Peru owns right now.
It, it, it's not going to work that way. And you've been in the talks, Solomon Perez, for two years. I, none of us understand why, why this is coming up now.
I assumed, I assumed that James Hardy was in the loop of everything, because they've been using that rail, or, I mean...
And, and they're well aware of the rail, they, they want more rail capacity, and they know that they need to build more rail capacity, and they know that this, this will give them more rail capacity, because the other end will be larger, because of this, this acquisition of our rail.
I guess, uh, if your scenario is right, what benefits could James Hardy have for only three miles of rail? Think from their business standpoint, city and James Hardy, what would be their benefits?
I have no idea, let's sit down and talk to them to find out, find out what the benefits are. I'm not in the rail business.
Well, I'm just asking, is what would their benefits be?
That's what we would have to sit down and talk about, because they're, according to, according to them, if their rates, they don't have a good working relationship with Illinois Rail, that's what I'm hoping...
That's on trucks, not, not on trucks. No, because they can only do five cars.
I'm giving you facts of what I'm told today. So if tomorrow, when they own, when Illinois Rail owns it, and if they get their, uh, fees jacked high enough to where they have to go to trucking, they're gonna start laying off people. That's their concern. And we should have been having these talks if we haven't.
They're well aware of this.
I'm just telling...
Solomon Perez, you're, you're, you're bringing up things that just, just, they're just not there.
Okay, I'm just giving you a fact.
No, there is a problem, and I said in my letter, with the demurrage of, uh, rail cars, 'cause they don't have enough onsite rail line. That's right, that's, that's a pending, that's a pending, uh, situation.
There are also in disputes about some of the...
But they give them service five days a week with two interconnects, uh, a, a day, and they do five cars. Would they be more efficient by doing, uh, uh, ten yards, twenty cars? It'd be great if they could do a hundred cars, but they're never gonna do a unit train, 'cause they never have a final destination to take a whole, whole unit train. No, that's fine, I, it, it's just, when I get an email this morning for something that's been going on for two years, just like it was discussed numerous times on the, uh, Peru school situation in, uh, closed session, times, uh, Superintendent Cross was here for at least an hour another time, and, uh, but it's always last minute issues.
We've been on such discussions for two, three, four, or five years, until we get that final revised document in our hands to review, that's when the questions are going to come, because things change. And I, we just received that last Thursday or Friday, whatever day it was.
And it's had three revisions since then again, so you know.
So, and that's the thing. So there's gonna be...
And it is, and every document's gonna have, where they send the tax bill was just changed at five o'clock.
This, this document is built around what was instructed to the attorney by the council to do. You know that. I don't know why you're saying this, you know that.
I know what?
You know that this document was advised to the corporate counsel the way we asked him to build it.
And it was built, and then we received it on Thursday, Friday, as we viewed it.
It's exactly what we asked for.
And I read...
And you never said anything, once again, you never said anything in any of the meetings.
I assumed, this whole time over the two years, that James Hardy's been in the loop on things. In fact, I remember the gentleman from James Hardy, uh, can't remember the gentleman's name, the big guy. I, I heard him say that he's had, sat, he's sat down with James Hardy and had conversations about their fees and about, you know, that had, had those conversations. According to him, they're concerned about where their fees are gonna be tomorrow, once Illinois Rail owns it. They're concerned, and we should be concerned also.
And Illinois Rail, if they owned it or not, could change their demurrage fees and their interconnect fees. Whether or not they own Peru Rail or not, those fees can be changed, isn't that the way it works, Solomon Radke? You deal with the railroad?
We, yeah, I do have some experience with that, and that is correct. We have no control right now over what Illinois Railway charges James Hardy, we will have no control tomorrow, we'll have no control a year from now, we had no control ten years ago, we have no control over that, it's, has nothing to do with us.
Well, once they have full control, maybe they will, you know, jack their rates up a lot higher. I mean, instead of paying fifty dollars a car like they're paying to Peru now, they may be charged...
There's no difference. There's no difference.
Over the fifty dollars a car, we do.
I, I'm, I'm not seeing anything new here, I'm seeing repetitive. So I, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve this or not as written and read. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second, Your Honor.
Have a motion, Solomon McCosus, Second Solomon Pataf, to approve the ordinance as written and read, is there any further discussion?
A roll call, vote, clerk call, roll.
Alderman Pataf?
Aye.
Ferrari?
Aye.
Waldorf?
Aye.
McCosus?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Bradkey?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Zapienza?
Aye.
Motion approved.
The second ordinance repeals ordinance number thirty-seven fifty-two as amended. Now, that ordinance was originally passed on December twenty, two thousand, and that established at that time the one hundred dollar per car fee, and then that was, um, amended, um, actually, it was amended, um, one month thereafter, uh, reducing that per car fee for fifty dollars per car, and that's the way it's remained since January fifteen, uh, twenty oh one. So, be erdeemed, upon the closing of the sale of Peru Rail by the city to Peru Industrial Railroad, the Peru Rail rate ordinance as amended should be repealed. This ordinance should be effective immediately from and after its passage and approval.
Do we have a motion to approve the ordinance as written and read?
Uh, so moved, Your Honor.
Second. Motion, Solomon Pataf, and Solomon Ferrari, to approve the ordinance as written and read, is there any discussion?
Uh, I think another point that, uh, we had with this is, a lot of the companies that use the rail system, they typically use it for, they're paying at an end user, meaning that when they ship the product for the sand industry, the end user is paying that fee. Uh, what we had in Peru was you're paying that fifty dollars or a hundred dollars a car upfront. Uh, so it's much more typical that the companies benefit from it because they pay at the end as opposed to paying that fifty dollars. And it has irritated a few, Jim, a few of the companies where it's been unusual, because when your rail system is in motion, what they do is they get a final rate, and that end rate is usually charged to the person receiving the product as opposed to the person shipping it out. Uh, so, uh, this gives them some consistency, uh, from that standpoint, as far as not charging rates upfront for it.
Okay, we have a motion, and the second one, roll call, vote, clerk.
There's only one other thing. I just would like, uh, Deputy Clerk to take a look at the, uh, rail billings for the last several months, and just do an audit of that, and make sure that everything is, um, everything that needs to be billed has been billed, so we can properly close everything out.
Have to see, you know, also in that, uh, sale, there's a property tax exhibit, so the, uh, property plat exhibit, the city is retaining complete easements for all our utilities over the north thirty feet and the south thirty feet of this line. And also, cut out of the conveyance is where you have your, um, uh, peaking units in the, uh, station out there, so that's, that's cut out of the, uh, uh, sale, but, uh, it's the, the complete easement reservations that's pretty substantial. And if you recall, the appraiser said he, you know, discussed one figure with and without, uh, the reservation of those easements. I have a zoning hearing. Yeah, it is, yeah, it's, it's real substantial, 'cause you really can't do anything with it, you know, so...
Okay, uh, we need to still do the roll call vote.
Alderman Pataf?
Aye.
Ferrari?
Aye.
Waldorf?
Aye.
McCosus?